This is the September 10th Waldaborough Select Board meeting of 2019. And we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the meeting formally, I'd like to point out that tomorrow is September 11th. And in anticipation of that occasion, not a very happy one for our country, could we all please have a moment of silence? Thank you. Thank you very much. Julie, would you mind saying a couple of words? I know you had-
I can.
-an experience you might like to share.
All of you know I'm from New Jersey. 9/11 was very much a part of my life for, ever since it happened. I had two volunteer firefighters, and I'm glad some of my members in my fire department are here tonight, in Medford Lakes, that were also New York City firefighters. And we were very blessed that day that they were helping one's mother move. So they were spared. Had they been at work, they would have joined their crew and not been a survivor. It was very difficult for Mike, who I was very close to as one of my firefighters in Medford Lakes as a volley, and then as a paid New York City firefighter. He struggled for a long time because he had that survivor guilt. And it always hit home to us. And I think as time moves on, sometimes you forget a little bit. But it's something that stayed with me for many years. And unless you were there in that area, and it's difficult because we had lost four residents. But when it's that close, we were kind of in the triangle where we lived. We had New York City, we were Pennsylvania, and then Washington DC. It just was in your face a lot. We lived next to a nuclear power plant, so we had jet fighters over us for about three years. So it was always a constant reminder. And when you look at what's going on in the world, and you live your day-to-day life, you get bogged down in these minute things sometimes. But people went that day to work, just minding their own business, and they didn't come home. And I always say this, there were victims and there were heroes. And when you think about your emergency services, they went into a building knowing they weren't coming out. Firefighters, EMS, and police went into a building knowing full well they weren't coming out. I stood with my fire chief in our town office and watched, and I'm silly. I'm thinking, "They're gonna land helicopters and they're gonna get everybody out." And my fire chief sat there and said to me, "They're not coming out." And it was a very hard thing to hear. So thank your first responders. I'm blessed. I am so blessed that I've had some of the best first responders ever in my life. And Waldaborough is very special. We're very unique. We have full-time EMS coverage. And these are some of the best people I've ever met in my life. And I've been treated by them, so I can say that. Our fire department is volunteer fire department. They give up a lot of time with their families. They go to calls on birthdays and Christmas. And our police officers, you never know what's going to happen. You know, just a few years ago, our chief walked into a situation that he couldn't, maybe, he's very lucky he walked out of. So you just don't realize what goes on. And I know I went on a little bit longer than I should, but it's, I'm very passionate about this. And so in the day-to-day life, when you think, "Oh, this is terrible," it's really not as bad as you think. You could always just keep it in your mind and just be thankful that we live in a country that is so amazing. And that's all. I'm done.
Thank you.
Paul, I wish you'd done that. But I didn't cry, I'm good.
I would like to add just a little piece to it, something that we didn't know about until just a few months ago. And as we are anticipating the arrival of our new ladder truck, we retired our old ladder truck. And during that ceremony that we retired it, the folks from New York that we bought it from, who bought it back, take it back there, came. And they shared with us that our old ladder truck stood with its ladder raised with the American flag on it over 30 funerals for 9/11 firefighters. So we had our own little piece of 911 history that was here. And that was something that we didn't know until that evening. It stretches far and wide to all of us. It's emotional for all of us when we think about it. Julie, thank you for sharing, because I couldn't have said-
Well, you know, and the one good thing that came out of this was, we got a piece of steel. Our fire department in Medford Lakes got a piece of steel. And we went up to retrieve it, and it was before the 9/11 memorial was opened. So we got to go to the hangar and go through and tour. For four hours, we walked around the hangar and just looked at the artifacts that were going to go into the museum. And if you haven't been to the 9/11 museum in New York, it's totally worth the trip. It's one of the most moving experiences. I rank it above just like the Holocaust museum, if you've ever been there in Washington DC. You will have a, it's a very emotional experience. And it's just, one of the things that struck me was, there was a fire truck that on one side looked pristine and beautiful, and on the other side was not. And the curator of the museum, who was kind enough to take us through personally, said it was just, if you were on that side, you survived. And if you were on that side, you didn't. And it just put it in perspective. So it was just, definitely go and see it.
Thank you. And Paul, further, you have someone to introduce to us tonight.
I do. It's always an honor to come before the Select Board and before the town, especially on good occasions. And this evening, I have a real privilege to introduce you, your new Assistant Fire Chief. We put together a process, and through that process, they had to take an exam. If they passed the exam, they were given the opportunity to sit for an oral board. And our oral board was chaired by our Deputy Chief Dale and four firefighters. In addition to, Mr. Butler represented the citizens and the board. And we had a business owner, Scott Murray, who owns Hillside. There's no business that the fire department works more with or more closely with than Hillside. And so we were very pleased to have him here with us. And our Mutual Fire Chief in Damerskada, John Roberts, sat on the board as well. And one of our dealer representatives that sells the equipment sat on the board. They all did an excellent job with questions and interviewing these folks. And Julie and I observed, and they just did a terrific job.
They did.
And I'm very pleased with the outcome of the process that came. The gentleman that we've hired is Mark Stolz. He moved here to Waldaborough, lives on Dutch Neck. He is a career firefighter. He is currently a captain on the Scarborough Fire Department. And we just couldn't be happier to have him here with us. So Mark, if you come up, I'd like to formally introduce you. And it's with great privilege and pleasure that I present to you this white helmet, which signifies your office here with us. And we welcome you to Waldaborough, and thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know the chief talked about my, you know, my experiences as a fire, as full-time, but I come from a long history, back when I was in high school, volunteer firefighting in two different communities throughout the year. So I know that side. And through the interview process, I also mentioned that I'm passionate about that. There's something about the volunteer thing. You know, you get done with the call, you're hanging out an hour after the call, just chatting with everyone. It's a community-based thing. You're, you know, it's neighbor helping neighbor. And I couldn't be more thrilled to, you know, to be a part of the organization. You know, the past week of running calls, it's just been amazing. It's such a great group of people. So I'm truly blessed and honored to be a part of the organization. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't mention them by name.
So Julie has someone to introduce as well tonight.
If Jody Kelly could come forward. So, as everybody knows, Eileen Donlinger is retiring after 32 years of service, I believe it is.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Thirty-four years of service to our community. And Jody Kelly is going to be our new town clerk. We had a wonderful interview process, and it was great because it was a unanimous decision. And what was even better is Eileen was part of it, and she's excited about Jody coming to our community. Jody comes, she lives in Damerskada, and she was a, previously worked in Nobleboro, and they're very angry at us because we stole such a good one. This would be the second one. And she's just gonna be a great fit. She's already, she's worked, what, two days with us, I think?
One.
One, two days.
I can't wait.
She starts on Monday, there's gonna be some overlap. So you'll see a new face when everybody has to come in and register vehicles, a very happy, sweet face. And it'll be great. So this is the great place that we work in. So you better enjoy it.
I will enjoy it.
I know you will.
I'm very much looking forward to working with the residents here and the people here in Waldaborough.
That was the biggest thing about Jody, was public service came first.
Yes.
And that's just, I think that's how she rolls.
That's how I roll. I, hey, the residents are why we're here, so that's very important to me. But it's nice to meet you all, and I'm sure I'll be seeing more of you.
We were just thrilled when she applied, because I looked at her resume and I was just so happy. And it was just great to have the fit, because Rose, Peg, Eileen, and I were in the interview. And she just, it was unanimous. Everybody just loved her. So it's gonna be a great start.
Which was a really good feeling, trust me. When I heard that, everybody liked it, I was like, "Oh, that's a wonderful start." This will be good.
It will be good.
Yeah.
And these guys aren't that hard to work for either, so they'll be okay.
I'm sure we'll blend eventually.
She's really from Bremen, but that's okay.
Yes, that's enough. We won't go there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
We do have one adjustment to the agenda, and that would be an appointment to the Budget Committee. And I would suggest we put that under item 10.2.6. Is there a motion?
There's a move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Select Board, sorry, citizen comments. Any comments from our citizen?
Good evening, how are you? Dionne Philbrook, Chapel Road. Probably know why I'm here. Was wondering if there has been any status change with Charter.
So, I have a meeting scheduled with Charter for the morning of the 16th.
Have you had any communication prior to them not meeting the August 22nd date?
I've had, I have communicated with them at least once every week. I did, I think it was 10 days ago, get a phone call that Shelley and I will be meeting the morning of the 16th. So I should have an answer then. I didn't wanna get everybody's hopes up, but we should have an answer on the 16th.
Thank you.
So I think we should all be happy and look at the bright side of this. And just remember, we get more with honey than we do with vinegar.
Great, so Robin Philbrook from Chapel. So I understand that, Julie. I think we've waited a long time out on Chapel Road. So I think anyone can appreciate the bit of frustration that we've been feeling, particularly over this last year, that we've been working tirelessly to meet the demands of Spectrum. And we furnished those agreements that we assigned, passed them in November, nine months. So we all kind of came up, I think, at a meeting of a date of August 22nd. And so we kinda let it sit, and I'm just recapping because it is frustrating. And then it comes April, and we're notified, I was notified, I can't remember who did it, someone from a town, that we had four more addresses that we needed to go out and have the people sign these. And they weren't even on Chapel Road, they was over on 235. But I hustled, my husband picked them up on his way home from work. I hustled out, got them, got them back to you, you passed them in. And so we waited, and I think we had a meeting after that, and we all kinda talked about, again, more of our frustration. And we felt that we really had to let that nine-month window ride out, which we did, August 22nd. And I'm just wondering, I know you don't know until your talk on the 16th, but I'm wondering, the way historically this has been going, and technically, this is probably the third time that Chapel Road has been dropped from getting connectivity of some sort, whether it was through Charter, Spectrum, or a grant that fell through somehow with LCI. I'm wondering, do we have a Plan B that we are ready to act upon should September 16th come, and that's not favorable to us? Because I think that it's high time that the citizens up there on Chapel Road have somebody really advocating and feeling our pain, and there are people here today, to talk about how this is impacting us. And I realize that probably 90, 95% of the town has connectivity. We don't, and I am just very concerned that we're looking at this project as saying, "Okay, if we can't get Spectrum to work with us, you know what? It's, we did a pretty good job, and that's good enough." Well, that's not how we feel out on Chapel Road. And the practical impact on each and every one of us is dire. And you may feel like that's being overstated, but it's not. It has economic ramifications, it has educational ramifications, it has health ramifications. I spoke to a lady the other day that has been dealing with some issues that she's having to deal with a physician that is at a distance from where she lives. And today, telehealth is a very big deal. And if you haven't seen it, the head of the VA department that just took over, they rely on telehealth a great deal, particularly for patients with heart failure. And this lady needed to have a teleconference with her physician, and she could not do it because of her lack of ability where she lives. And that's just one example. And I know from the, I don't know, I'm frustrated, and I'm sure you are too, with this whole franchise agreement, that I have a copy. I asked Max if that was available. I have a copy of it. It was 1982. And Charter has recognized that they're honoring this franchise contractual agreement. And in it, the bottom line is that they would put service to folks that lived, if there were nine homes within a mile. And we have satisfied that. And we have recently, in the last four months, had three new people move onto our road. And that's gonna add another three. And I really feel like, I hope that the town is prepared to either push Spectrum, and there was an article in the paper where some Western Maine communities, 12 or 14, are banning up and are taking legal action, or that maybe we're willing to look at, what are we doing with that annual fee that's coming back into the town? Maybe we ought to redirect that and finish the project out on Chapel Road. But I think that we, as citizens out there, need some answers. And I hope that it does come on the 16th, because we're tired.
She actually requested the meeting, so, after my persistence. So she is meeting with me face-to-face.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Right. And I would prefer that we see what happens on the 16th before we talk about any ramifications, because I think, like I said, I'm hopeful for that meeting. And I think if it turns out that we don't get the answer we want, then we have to regroup and actually have a meeting specifically dedicated to what we would do next. And bear in mind, with the expense, because that was pointed out to me, there's towns going in for five, we did not put any money in the budget for any legal fees for that. So that would-
This year.
This year. That would be, have to be a discussion. And if you wanna change where any revenue goes, that's a discussion for next year's budget. So I just, I don't wanna get your hopes up and say, "Hey, we can just write a check." Because that check doesn't exist to be written.
Exactly, but that-
But that means that conversation after the 16th, if that doesn't happen, should be had. And that would be a budgetary discussion as well as a legal discussion.
And I would, I would hope that this would be set as a high priority, because this has been going on far too long for us. And I think, Bob, that you're well aware of that, how long that we've been waiting out there. And I really do think that it's getting to a point where, you know, if we don't get a positive answer on the 16th, there shouldn't be a big delay in us acting as to, okay, what's the next step? Because when we talk about-
Well, just bear in mind, if you're talking about committing funds, that has to go through the budget process, and it's voted on by the voters. So I, you just-
So when, so when we have, I have had other monies from the Spectrum-
You vote on it every budget, where the revenues go.
So people know, oh, this budget for new, new streetlights, that's, that money is gonna be-
It's all talked about.
It's gonna come from a $30,000 from Spectrum.
All the revenues are put together.
So we have one general budget or whatever.
You have, you have a general fund, it lists all the revenues, and then you have all the expenditures. But when you're, say you want to do something for a project, like extend the broadband, that would be a major item, and you would vote on that. Even for the legal fees, you're gonna say, you're gonna say during the, what are we using them for? So just be prepared. I'm just trying to prepare everyone, because it sounds great. I'm just, it sounds great, well, we'll just proceed this way. I'm just letting you know that it's still going to take time. I'm not saying it's not happening, but I'm just letting you know, after that, if we have to go that route, it's still going to be a matter of time. I just want you to understand that.
So we're talking the next budget-
Budget cycle would be July 1st of next year. Right. I just want everybody to be aware of that.
And I'm hoping that the people who are sitting in this room as members of the Select Board and you, Bob, as the chairman, would be advocating for this project and for the people on Chapel Road.
We've been advocating for this project for as long as I've been involved with the Communications Technology Committee, and we're gonna continue advocating for the project.
And of course, you would-
And when does it get to be like, okay?
Well, let's, let's wait to see what happens on September 16th. That, to me, is an important meeting. And you're giving Julie a lot of fodder to use in her diplomatic way to-
Okay, well, this is-
And the CTC, the CTC is meeting that night. So I'll be updating the CTC on that.
I know there's a lot of folks that would like to speak as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Who's first here?
I didn't see somebody.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. But, yeah, I'm Miles Lund, and I just wanted to add my name to the list of folks on Chapel Road who are interested in getting some broadband or internet service out there. I run a small business, and it's, it's a little difficult without it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's a struggle anyway, just running a business without having these other hindrances involved. So, yeah, anything that you guys can do to help move that along would be really appreciated.
Another important point we can make when we talk to the number 16th. That's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting us speak. I'm really grateful to be here. I don't know if you know, but anyway, my name's Dionne Fuglizzo. I just recently bought a house on Chapel Road. I'm also in nursing school. I go to SMCC in Brunswick. And you can imagine my surprise when I moved in on August 1st, and I tried to get my internet hooked up to my house. And they kind of laughed at me on the phone with Spectrum. I'm sure they heard Chapel Road and were like, "Oh, we know about you," and called LCI, and they said it wasn't possible. I didn't even have cellphone service on my road, so I had to change providers. And I have Verizon, and I'm now paying a lot of money in order to be able to use my phone as a hotspot. So I'm just coming here to let you know that I'm an additional person in Waldaborough. I love this community. I moved to Maine a couple of years ago and fell in love so much that I decided to buy a house here. I'm going to school here so that I can be a rural nurse practitioner, and I can support my community that I care about. And school requires a lot of internet. I'm sure that you all know that, if you have kids or have gone through school yourselves. I would say about 55% of what I do for school every day is on the internet. And I am there trying to find the one spot in my house where I have good Verizon service, and it's really slow, and I have to watch these videos, I have to take exams online. It's hard. And I'm working full-time here in Waldaborough. I work for a catering company down the road at Harvest Moon. So I'm doing a lot, and I care a lot about this place. And I just want y'all to know that this is really important, it would mean a lot. So I'm really grateful to hear that you have a meeting on the 16th. I really can't wait to hear how that goes. And as Robin says, I really hope to know what happens if something falls through, that I know that we have to wait maybe next year around budgeting, but that y'all are looking out for us, and that we're just not brushed aside. Because lives depend on it, my future depends on it, passing school depends on it. So I appreciate your time, and I really can't wait to hear what happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, did you sign in when you came in?
I did, yes.
Okay, so we have your name.
We're gonna have to have, to spell your last name, so.
I am also a Chapel Hill recipient, and I'm also a single parent, going to school, and internet's kind of a big thing. We kinda need it.
Sorry, what is your name, sir?
Ben Smith, sorry. I'm a graduate here as well. So, 2012. Yeah, I just wanted to get my name in and let you guys know if you can help us out, that'd be great.
Thank you very much. All of these are very important comments, and bolster the case we're gonna be making to Spectrum on the 16th. Every little bit helps. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
I'm hoping she's coming to like, cut the ribbon.
Wouldn't that be nice?
You know, that would be great.
Yeah. Are there, are there any further, sorry, Robin, did you-
That was just when you said you're hoping she's coming to cut the ribbon.
Cut the ribbon.
I would hope at this point, with the amount of communications and stuff that's been going through, that she is coming with some positive, we're ready for the next step. Because I think one of the last meetings, Bob, we were at, you know, you said they were doing some stuff that was like poll-ready or something.
Make-ready, yeah.
Make-ready. So I would hope that this is where we're at, because as much as you've appreciated hearing some of this, and this is only about 25% of the stories that are going on out in Chapel Road, a lot of people couldn't make it tonight, is that, you know, we, at this point, they should be ready to strike. This isn't like a new agreement. You know, we have demonstrated and fulfilled those requirements. And it seems like we shouldn't have to be given excuses or reasons why we need it. It's just the fact, like everyone else in town, they got it because they met that agreement. We ought to be able, we've got those nine homes.
We do.
And that was demonstrated in that agreement in 1982.
Exhibit A, paragraph one. Yep.
Exactly. Page 22 or whatever it was. And so I'm thinking at this point, they've really kind of stretched their-
The only thing that I could think they would say is, back in April, when we gave the last four, that that clock starts then. That's the only thing I could think.
But there again, when that, when they gave us the initial request for those on Chapel Road- on Chapel Road, this was a new request or whatever, those four homes' addresses were on Union Road, it had nothing to do with the Chapel Road project, and I think that we need to hold to that. And if, in fact, that was gonna change now the time clock, they needed to have stated that at that time, I would hold them to it.
I think we agree with you on that.
I think, I, right, it's just, I'm just trying to think of scenarios, and that could be the only one.
I understand, but.
But we will know Monday morning.
And the rest of us will know Monday night.
And we'll be here Monday night.
At CTC, great, okay.
Yeah, please come that night, because then I'll, I'll know. I'll, I'll, I will have had my meeting.
Maybe, maybe she would come to that meeting Monday.
Okay, let's just stick with me getting her right here.
And who is she?
Shelley.
From Rockland Office?
From, I don't know if she's in the Rockland, she could be.
Shelley went to bed?
She was in somewhere else.
Yeah.
She does?
Yeah.
I haven't been there since I arrived.
I would just say, don't contact her. Let me contact her, yeah.
Yeah, let's keep it.
Let's, we'll keep it at this level, and then, yeah.
Yeah. Any further citizen comments? Thank you for those that you've made. Okay, Select Board comments. Katie.
The only thing I have is, this Saturday is the very last day for the farmers market, but the weather doesn't look too good, so I don't know if we're gonna have it or not.
The weather looks pretty good.
Hopefully next year, we'll have a lot more, many more vendors come in and really up the ante on people coming in.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that they're thinking of doing it again next year as well. That's good.
Yep.
Thank you.
And thank you to the, everybody who participated in the garden club. Made Walderboro look extra special this year.
It sure did. Thank you, Katie. Clint?
Just like, say, hey, guy done a real good job on two-twenty. We had a lot of complaints, you know, when the road was real bad, but no one said how good they've done, and I think they've done excellent.
Good point, yep. That's it. Thank you. Jan?
Um, this is Art Walk Week, second Saturday, and so I hope people will show up downtown. It's from four to seven o'clock, and there are a number of people, I think it's in the teens, people who are involved in art walk in Walderboro. I just had an interesting conversation yesterday. One of my brothers came up, and I was telling him about, we were going down the hill, and many years ago, he had been, we had, oh, what do you call it when you have three things? Ironman, an Ironman competition in town. And my brother rode the bicycle for a team. I'd forgotten about that, but I was telling him about this guy in town, a crazy guy who moved back to town and decided that he's going to have races, and that Walderboro, with all its hills, is going to be the, the race center of Maine, and that there's a half marathon being advertised. And one of the, one of the ways he's advertising it is, come run twelve hills. And, and he has a number of people signed up for that, and that's Lucas McNelly. He owns Long Winter Soap Company downtown. And he has done, and I was telling my brother, he has pushed this racing where he can get seventy people to come out on a freezing cold day in December to come to Walderboro. And he always says, hopefully buy soap. But perhaps that might be something that makes Walderboro a destination, you know?
It's a good thing.
You just, you just never know, but he certainly brings people in, and how he does that, I don't know. He is quite the marketer, I think.
We could bike run and swim.
He has some wee, you have a mouse in your pocket.
Swim at the tide, at the tide, at the high tide, we could swim off the landing.
They did.
Yeah?
They did that.
Yes, a three-mile swim and an Ironman, a hundred-mile bike race, I forget how long the --
Well, this, I don't know that this was that long, but they had --
I mean, you and I could.
Oh, yeah, they had three parts. They swam, but I was down at the landing.
Yeah.
We was down at the landing.
I didn't say we swam fast.
Where they got, yeah. I can float. So anyway, that was just a conversation that I had in the last couple of days about Walderboro, and then, and those are, those are all good and rather unique things, I think.
Thank you. I just want to say that the library is setting up for a silent auction, which will take place in early October, and send everybody a reminder to please read to your kids. Reading to kids is really important. It's one of the things they will remember when they become adults, that my mom and dad read a book to me when I was, read books to me when I was a kid. And it, it improves literacy, it creates a, a great context for learning, and it gives the kids and their parents time to have some together time, share some precious moments. So read to your kids.
Reading is fundamental.
Yep. Manners, you're up.
I just want to let everybody know that our next forum is October six, no, October sixteenth. October sixteenth, yes. Invitations have went out. It's gonna provide an update for what we discussed at the first forum, and hopefully a path forward, so save the dates went out, invitations will go out shortly. The only other thing I had to say, and Clint kind of stole my fire, is that two-twenty is done, Main Street is next.
They're really gonna do Main Street this fall?
They say they are this fall, we will see.
Wow, that's, that's great.
That would be great.
Yeah.
We'll see how that goes. We did, though, get word yesterday, we did not receive the FEMA fire truck grant. We made it to the last round, so we did receive word that we were not getting the funding for that. So that was kind of a bummer.
For the big truck?
For the big truck. But we got further than we've ever gotten before.
And we, we've allowed for that eventuality, I mean, we --
We did, right.
We didn't expect it.
We didn't expect it. It was, it would have been a windfall.
It would have been.
But we were not successful in that endeavor. But we got further than we ever had, so that's something to be proud of. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Consent calendar, we do have correspondence that we probably need to talk about on the consent calendar. There's a letter from Lincoln County, they write one every year, and they're requesting us to attend their meeting, at which they choose somebody to be on the county budget and --
And they're requesting all of you to attend.
They always ask for all of us to go. So that's just a, a quick reminder.
And Bill Belogit was in to visit me and tell me you all should go. And I'm sorry, but I can't say no to Bill.
Is there a motion on the consent calendar, please?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. New business, first, we have a lot of appointments to make and confirmations of appointments to make tonight. And the first one is Jody Kelly is registrar effective September sixteenth, which will be next Monday. Boy, lots happening on the sixteenth this month.
Lots, it is.
Is there a motion on these?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would move.
Uh, Jody Kelly?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Any, any further discussion? It was nice to meet her tonight.
She's a great, the only thing she cannot do that Eileen does is be the Shellfish Secretary Committee, because her son is a digger in town here. He's one of our diggers. So Tanya is going to be the Shellfish Committee Secretary.
Okay, that's great. Any further discussion on Jody? All in favor? Okay, thank you. And then ten point two is to reconfirm current appointments and new appointments to the following committees, and I'll just go through this, omitting one of them, which I think we need to talk about separately. So it'll be ten, two, one, two, three, four, and six of, and I'll, I'll just say, ten, two, one is to confirm appointments of Abden Simmons, Wayne Harvey the second, and Arthur Kramer to Shellfish.
Kramer.
Ten, two, sorry?
Kramer.
Kramer, thank you. You'd think I'd know that by now, Clint.
I would think.
But if he were in Germany, it would be Kramer.
It would be Kramer, that's right. But that's no, that's a excuse for me.
And was.
It's Becker Kramer.
Ten, two, two, two is Conservation Committee, Kathy Calco and John Morris. Ten, two, three, Communications Committee, John Lawrence. Ten, two, four, Recreation, Karen Roan and Ray Tompkins. And ten, two, six would be to appoint Bill Maxwell to serve out Deb Toulouse's term on the Budget Committee. He's indicated a willingness to do that.
He has, and he was a vote getter.
And he was, yeah.
Right.
I move approval.
Is there a, a second? Any further discussion on these, this, this slate here? All in favor? Okay, and then ten point, two point five concerns the Subcommittee, the AD Gray Subcommittee that the Select Board set up. We appointed Freeman Zausner, Jan Binsey, Bruce Metrick, and myself to be on that Subcommittee. Saran Pine has come forward and offered to, she could be a consultant on the committee, or we could vote her on as a, as a member. I personally would want to see her as a member, but a consultant would be helpful as well. She's a, she can offer legal advice to the committee. She has done deals at the state level, real estate deals, somewhat similar to the deal we're complicating, contemplating on AD Gray. And I would request that we add her to the AD Gray Subcommittee to help the Select Board out on this particular matter.
My concern on that was the Subcommittee, it seems to me it would be the Subcommittee who would decide if we need another member, who we need, how we want to set up that. And that hasn't been done.
Well, it's been done informally, but you're right. The Subcommittee hasn't met and said.
It hasn't been done with the members. I'm, I'm on that, and it's all been a surprise.
Okay, well, here we are. Freeman is, was aware of it. In fact, I think Freeman suggested it. I thought it was a good idea. I've talked to Bruce Metrick about it, so there we are.
My, well, my concern probably is maybe communication.
And that's my, that's my, I'll take responsibility for that.
Yeah, there's been zero communication. One of the things that I think is important in Walderboro is that we represent the town, that, that the committees do represent the town, so that you do get information and ideas from what would be a cross-section of town. This committee doesn't.
I think this committee is, as a Subcommittee, is not a committee.
Right, but as, as any, yeah.
It's a very special purpose committee, appointed to give us assistance in dealing with what could become a complex transaction.
Right, and it should meet to discuss those, to discuss the issues. And, and that hasn't happened. We have, we've met, and we had, you know, twice, but these issues didn't come up during a meeting. And it seems to me, since we are public, that, that we need to do that in public, that we need to have discussions, that the committee needs to have a discussion and know what's going on before it's presented to the board.
Well, are we splitting hairs here?
I don't think so.
I mean, three of us are certainly aware of the stuff that --
Right, that, there should have been discussion prior, prior to the, that's what I'm saying.
Should be up to, but not necessarily when. And in this particular case, given the fact that we're gonna be putting this before the Planning Board in a preliminary application tomorrow night, is that right, Max?
Do you want me to come up and talk about it?
Well, at this point, I don't think we need, this is just for discussion.
Mm-hmm.
So, and it is the Board who's gonna make the appointment. It doesn't, we don't need necessarily have to have a recommendation from the committee. In essence, three of us on the committee are making the recommendation. So I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Jan, but the way this kind of fell into place, it just made absolute sense.
That's what bothers me, is that it fell into place, that it wasn't a part of the committee, that, that the committee was not, not part of the discussion.
Okay, well, I don't know whether we can get beyond that or not, but if we can't, we can't. If we can't, I don't know how Katie and Clint feel about it. Abden isn't here. I think for purposes of getting this thing moving forward, we do have a preliminary application tomorrow night, that it would be good to have a, have the, the basis in place for furthering our discussion as a, as a Subcommittee.
And how would --
Knowing that we have legal access available.
How would having another person on the committee for tomorrow, how would that affect the planning, the meeting at the Planning Board?
Well, I would hope that we're gonna be attending that meeting tomorrow night, and it, we don't have to wait another two weeks to have this additional person involved in the process. It's gonna move forward fairly rapidly, if it moves forward at all after tomorrow night. We'll know. But I'd rather not wait two weeks for this to, to take shape when we could get it done tonight.
And so then, I, I'm guessing we have meetings planned between now and two weeks?
I think that will depend on Tim and how he feels after the meeting tomorrow night.
I'm just not --
I mean, it may be a dead end by that point, I don't know.
I'm just not understanding how, the difference between having a consultant, having a person who would be helpful to consult or help, or having a member, how that would make a difference for tomorrow. I don't, I don't see the connection.
I'm not connecting it to tomorrow. I'm connecting it to the next time we meet with Tim, having that person available to be, to join in the conversation.
Person could be a consultant without being, correct?
To me, to me, that's a distinction, that a difference, that they're gonna be involved, they're gonna be involved. And I think that frankly, after tomorrow, we may meet as soon as two days. It becomes ripe after tomorrow when we see the reaction of people at the meeting. So if it's still alive, I would want to suggest we meet right away. And I think the committee isn't so much an advocate, it's that you have Bruce, who's a construction person. I have a construction background and a finance background, so it's, it's really a technical committee. So she's, she's not joining and representing, let's say, like a Dutch Nick or a part of Walderboro. She's joining because she has specific experience in real estate contract law.
I, I understand that.
And the purpose is to save us money. In other words, what happens with lawyers for pay is if you go in and you do a wrong turn, it can cost a lot of money for them to back you out of the wrong turn and tell you, well, you should have gone here. And the real purpose of having someone who has legal experience who's working for free, but not on fiduciary responsibility, is very important, because that would create a legal liability, the ABA requirements, is for that person to say, well, you know, I've sort of done this, this is probably the way you want to go, and it saves time and it saves money, if we actually, after tomorrow, have a live event. I think it's very generous of her to make this offer. She's busy, she has a practice, and she cares just a lot about helping us to go through this from her own expertise. I understand that it --
And how is that different if she consults or if she's a member?
Well, actually, I think that no one should be at the meeting if they're not a member. Everybody else has, why would, then why would I be on the committee? I could consult. I mean, that, if you're gonna have a Subcommittee, then the people in the Subcommittee are members of the Subcommittee. If that were the case, then I should be dropped, I'd never be put on, because I could just be in the meeting without being a member of the Subcommittee. It's, I'm no different than her, and I don't think Bruce is any different than her. We're three people that have specific expertise that we think the Select Board would believe have a relevance technically.
I'm looking at from the, from the town perspective, from the community, and this is something that, that the community will --
Then I should be on it any more than her. You should kick me off, because I'm no, I have no more qualified to be on that committee than her. Whether it's Bruce, her, or me, we come not representing what the community should do in terms of the proposal, that's of the community. We're here simply to say, we know construction, we know process, we have the law.
Right, I understand that part. I understand that.
Then why should I be on the committee?
Did you go through an interview process?
Not for the committee, no. Freeman's on the Marijuana Committee, just like Saran. I mean, there wasn't requirement or a need to interview. Bruce has been on the Budget Committee. It just wasn't need to go through that, that formal process. We really were looking for people with experience and expertise.
Who's the weak? That's, that's, I guess that, maybe that's the question.
The Select Board, and that's why we appointed these three people to be on it and yourself as well. We represent the community. They represent expertise. And I, I think that makes, that's common sense to me. That's just, let's move forward and hopefully have in place the team we need to do.
I understand the moving forward, I'm, I'm just, the process, it's, the process is disturbing.
Process, yeah.
Yeah, the process is what my, my issue-
But you are, let's say you, let's say we hypothetically consent and in fact stipulate the process is wrong. The process is wrong. Are you saying then if we met two days, day after and we met and then we say yes, Saran's on, then the process is okay? Are you saying the process is irremediable, broken? What are you, are you saying it's broken forever or can it be remediated? I'm not sure I understand your position.
I don't like the way the, I, I'm not comfortable the way the process has happened. We've had a Subcommittee. The Subcommittee has never discussed how many people they, how many people should be on the committee, who should be on the committee, who should be represented, what, what the focus is. That to me should have been done first rather than-
But you had no objection until now, I don't understand this.
I don't, I mean, it's the Select Board.
Because you were at the committee and you didn't make an objection in the meetings we had.
It's the Select Board that chooses the Subcommittee and chose the Subcommittee. And you volunteered to be on it along with me.
Right, and where do the names come from? Shouldn't they come from?
I mean, are we questioning the entire process now? Are we questioning that Freeman and Bruce should be on the committee as well? Because you voted to put them on it. I did as well. I'm not sure what the issue is on this one, Jan. I understand your concern about process, but we didn't interview any of the members of the committee, the Subcommittee. It's a, it's a special Board Committee. It's not going to be around until-
I understand it's an ad hoc committee. I guess, one of the things that bothers me as a member of this committee is that I keep, there, there are surprises. I thought as a member of the Subcommittee, I would know these things before they happen.
Fair enough.
And so far, I haven't as far as, as the makeup of the committee goes.
Fair enough, that's a fair comment.
That's, that's what concerns me and, and we're doing it again.
So, are we going to stop and not go forward? Do you have a specific objection to Saran per se? That's the issue as far as I'm concerned at this point.
Well, I, I think-
I mean, we're discussing this at length right now as a Board and, and it's our responsibility to either to appoint or not to appoint.
I don't think there's, I don't think there's that big a rush personally. I think it, I would like to see the committee get together and perhaps set up some, some norms so that we know what's expected. But to come into another meeting and, and there's a name here, did it come out of the blue?
No, did it come out of the blue?
Right.
I mean, I-
But as a person on the committee, I find it on the agenda. That's all I know about it. I haven't been, the, the committee hasn't met, to my knowledge.
It's not the responsibility of the Sub, Subcommittee to make recommendations about who's on that Subcommittee.
Or it hasn't been discussed at the Select Board?
It's being discussed now. My goodness, I mean, we're talking about this now at length.
Right.
I don't see the point of this conversation at this-
But I think the problem was that when Jan saw it, it was already on the agenda.
It's already, already been done.
That was the issue.
That was not done. We have to vote on it.
Right, but I think-
That's why we're having a conversation, that's why it's on the agenda.
I think that's why she felt blindsided by it was she read it on the agenda, nobody called and said, hey, by the way, we had this discussion or you met.
We haven't had the discussion.
Right, but what she's saying is from the committee standpoint, it would have been nice if somebody had just called her and said, hey, this is what we're thinking. I, I think it's a matter of, we could have done that.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that.
Right, I was surprised when Bruce and Freeman were, that was a surprise too. So, it just, it, there seems to be some kind of a communication issue or, or what does this Board, what are they responsible for or who is running it?
I think she just-
There are, I have a lot of questions about it that, although the meeting we had, I think I certainly enjoyed, you know, I think it was probably worthwhile.
If you've enjoyed the meetings and there's been progress and useful results from having those meetings, I'm, I'm really flummoxed about why we're having this conversation now.
I think it's to, totally communication.
That's fine, but let's get to the point. I mean, do we want to have on the Subcommittee as a Select Board, do we want to have that kind of expertise available to the Subcommittee? If we don't, let's not vote it on. If we do, it's been made available, volunteered, someone stepped forward and said, I'd like to do this. We've discussed it, we're discussing it now. My personal view is to take advantage of what we're being offered. It's going to, it potentially could save the town money. It's a person who's experienced in this kind of transaction.
No, I, I know the person and I know it could save money whether, whether she's a consultant, whether we could use that or whether she's on the Board. I'm concerned from the makeup of the town and this is something that, that the town needs to, we need to sell to the town again. I have concerns.
Well, I think it's our responsibility as the Select Board to make decisions like this. Certainly, we have the authority to appoint the Subcommittee. It's not the town that does it. The town has delegated that responsibility to us. And I guess I'm arguing that we have, we've been offered in a sense a gift here. And I don't think we ought to steer a gift horse in the mouth. I think we ought to take it and run with it. It's a, an excellent opportunity to round out the expertise that we have on the, on the committee. It makes total sense to me.
Who's the Chair, who's the Chair of the Subcommittee? That's a good question.
We don't have a Chair. We sort of meet informally and we get along well, we haven't had to have-
How many members on the committee?
There are four.
The first, as far as I know, there have been two meetings. Is that correct?
The, the meetings you've had or the meeting that you've been in with the meetings we've had.
And Bruce ran one.
He was our facilitator.
He, excellent.
He did an excellent job.
Excellent facilitator.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Just, just to maybe move this along, I mean, I can see both issues. Obviously, Jan has got the, she's, there's a process issue, communications issue. Maybe, can you, can you meet as your Subcommittee and this person being the audience and, and you guys have this discussion about her as a Subcommittee? Or we can go on and on and on?
I, I, I just feel that we're having this discussion at the level where it needs to be had. We make the appointment.
I understand, but I think, I think-
Yeah, well.
You know, the communications thing, everyone on the Subcommittee should have maybe known this, I would think. I would want to know if I was on it, but.
But who's in charge? That's a good question, that was one of my questions too. If nobody's in charge, then anything goes, the way I look at it.
That's why the discussion's being held at this level, where it, just where it should be held.
Unless, does the Subcommittee answer to the committee?
Yeah.
Does it, does the Subcommittee-
The Subcommittee answers to the Select Board.
Okay.
The Select Board appointed it, so a priori, the Subcommittee answers to the Select Board. It can't be any other way.
Well, if there's nobody in charge, then-
We have no, we have no, Bruce and I have no authority whatsoever in this process. We are simply people with expertise which the two members of the Board plus Julie draw upon and we offer that expertise. We have no authority, we have no voting rights, we cannot, as a Subcommittee, we don't vote. The two of them control everything because they represent the citizens. We do not represent the citizens. We are simply people with real estate, construction experience, period. There are no votes, we don't vote, we make suggestions to them. They're the ones that make the decisions. We have no power whatsoever, zero. They are the only two leaders, not even Julie, it's Bob and Jan. They're the people that are in control of the committee, period.
Well, I haven't had any control in the committee, so I'd have to relinquish that. Well, you've put, you've brought names forward.
Yeah.
All three.
It's been very relaxed. I don't, I don't know the word surprise. I, I don't get surprised by things that are good, that are happening, that are nice. If I feel my rights have been violated, yeah, I'll get upset. But this is a Subcommittee, Freeman points out, it has no authority or power whatsoever. We're getting together to hopefully facilitate a deal on AD Gray.
And there's, we've had another person as a liaison between the town and developer and, and that's been, I think, helpful. Not a member, but a, I think a liaison person. I mean, that was the role that I saw at the meeting. I, I just wanted to let you know I'm uncomfortable with the process, it's-
Point taken.
That's all, that's all. And is Saran on another committee?
She's on the Marijuana Committee.
She's on the Marijuana-
Was she on the Marijuana Committee before?
She still is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Abden and Katie would have interviewed her.
We reaffirmed her at our last meeting to be on that committee. She's been interviewed, she's a known entity. And she knows real estate, so.
I'll make a motion to move on.
So, you're going to table this, this?
No.
You're going to make a motion, we appoint her?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Further discussion? Anything further to talk about? All in favor of the appointment of Saran? All opposed to Saran? Okay.
And it's not the person?
Well, but it sounds like it's the person.
Well, it's not the process.
It's not, it's not the person. This carries a zero vote.
Right.
Sorry?
This carried a, a zero vote. Tie vote is a zero vote.
Is a, is a zero vote, that's right, didn't pass. Okay. Well, I hope we don't lose her. Next item is old business. Fireworks ordinance update. Clinton, Jan is your baby, I think.
And Paul?
And Paul.
Paul was here.
He's gone.
Yep.
Paul really helped us through it, I think, because there was some language in there that, you know, if I, if I have fireworks in my house, someone's going to tell me I can't have it. And we, all of us had an issue with that. No matter how we voted on this, because I didn't like it to start with, that's how I voted against it, but I think what we have to do is sort of, we have to honor whatever the language is. And that's pretty much what we discussed, am I right? And I got a real bad memory sometimes, but I remember that.
There, there wasn't a lot that could be done. We had to honor the vote. The vote was numerical, we had to honor that vote. And the only thing we really added, there was just one small addition to that and that was-
The blueberry?
No, the blueberry was, that was, that was already built into the original ordinance and, you know, that, we kept that. It was, there were specific dates that, that could be commercial fireworks.
Event date, yeah.
Right. And Paul felt that it was important that we have an, an opening in there so that in case the fire department wanted to have a special activity, that they would be able to. There's specific dates like Waldeboro Day, Fourth of July.
Firemen's Association does it to the state or something anyway, don't they?
Yeah. So, long as it's, do you have the paper there?
It's what they do now.
There were the notes that you took?
Yeah.
Or somebody took?
I thought that you're, that you'd come up with a draft ordinance for us to look at.
We did.
So-
And it was written out and we had it in the last pocket, I think.
But it sounds as though you're not in agreement on the draft that you put forward.
No, we are in agreement, yeah, we're all in agreement. Yes.
But then why are, why is Paul raising concerns?
No, he just wanted to make sure we understood that.
He put that in the ordinance, the ordinance that we wrote.
This is, what, she retyped for you?
Did she retyp, okay. It had to do with the date.
Just so you know, this is going on the June ballot because the November date came and went.
Oh.
Because we didn't have the last.
So, we have time.
We have time, since we didn't have the last meeting.
Added, the words added were, "Or special events approved by the Select Board." For example, the Fireman's Anniversary Celebration. Those were the, that's what was added.
Okay.
So, anyway, it was all, there wasn't a lot that could have been done because we had to honor the vote.
So, what is your proposal, what are we doing tonight?
We're not doing nothing till June, it sounds like, so we don't really know.
You want to pen this until we have all five of us here?
I would guess.
I think everyone received, didn't everyone receive a copy of the?
I didn't because I wasn't here for that meeting, so.
Well, here's a copy of it.
I'm sure there's one available that will clean it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that top one is the copy.
Right here.
Oh, it is, okay.
This is a, these are the notes from, from the meeting.
That's what Jan gave to Tanya and Tanya typed in.
All right. Well, I'm not going to be specific, but my concern after having gone through that very crucially is that it doesn't have the meat that the original ordinance had. I think it's fine to try to reflect what the folks in the petition wanted, but they also made it very clear in that petition that certain details are supposed to, like penalties, they weren't specified in the petition, but somehow we've all agreed that we have to specify penalties. That's up the Select, that's up to the Select Board to do. And I believe you've done that. But that's outside the scope of the petition.
Right.
And I'm going to use that as a lever to open that hole a little, a little more and suggest that there are other things that as a Select Board, we ought to be doing with this ordinance to make it more responsible than currently drafted.
Like what? It has the violations, penalties and enforcement on here.
It does now, yeah, but that wasn't in the petition.
What we did was we addressed the, there were some things in the ordinance that the petition did not address and we kept those.
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is if you're willing to do that, then I think you've got to be willing to look at the whole thing.
We did.
To determine what we've taken out of the old ordinance that really ought to be in this ordinance, in the new one.
We took out everything, the only things we took out were those things that disagreed with the petition, that we couldn't put in. For example, users must obtain a permit from the town office. Well, they can't use it, so that's, you don't put that in because they can't, they can't use it. They can't have fireworks. Can't do consumer fireworks.
But if you're going to have fireworks in town, the fire department should know about it, should it not?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, then how, what's the mechanism in what you drafted there to require the fire department be notified?
The consumer can't, those are commercial, the commercial people can have them.
Right.
Commercial fireworks cannot, you can't.
If somebody in town is going to sponsor an event, Waldeboro Day for example, and have fireworks?
No, they, that is, that's not consumer fireworks.
Understood, understood. But we don't have a commercial fireworks ordinance in Waldeboro.
We don't.
No, we don't.
But we haven't. We went through this one, that wasn't in here either.
Understood.
Right.
But-
I wish Paul were here, he could explain that because that all goes under, there are certain laws that they have to apply, state laws, that, that the commercial people-
That state law-
This was for consumer.
Right.
This was for consumer.
I get that, yeah.
But based on the, the new window in June now, I think we could probably wait for Paul and make sure everyone understands.
Okay. So, we table this then?
We can.
Until?
Somewhere.
Is there a, until when do we, would you like to table it?
Next meeting.
I guess.
Okay.
Next September meeting, is it, that's a motion? Okay, is there a second?
And do you, are we asking for Paul to come explain this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, there's a reason for table.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think he needs to-
This never applied to the commercial people.
Understood.
Nor, nor did the old one, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and Paul talked about that when we were meeting, but that wasn't our job.
Right.
Our job was to deal with consumer, just consumer fireworks.
And you're not, she's not allowed to have them anymore.
Right. And that's, we didn't like it, but we didn't have to like it. It was, you know, it was the vote.
So, there's a motion to table it until the next meeting when Paul will be here.
Yes.
A second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, that's been tabled. Max, you want to talk about the CMP offer?
So before this, I'll just quickly, because there was questions about tomorrow, what's happening with the planning board. What's happening is a pre-application. So what happens is, an applicant comes in and they're just giving the concept of the project without, you know, final document or form.
Right.
They're just giving the idea of what they're gonna do, and the planning board's not supposed to give an indication of, will prove it, will deny it. It's supposed to just be similar to the meetings that have already happened with the committee, with the AD grade committee, where the developer comes in, just says what they're gonna do, and the planning board just bounces questions off for as long as they'd like. And just to really get more familiar with the project before it just is dropped on their laps that night. So that's, I just wanted to clear that. It's not a preliminary application. That's like when they're getting actual approval. Pre-application, it's just, it's just a conversation more or less. Right. So LED updates. Unfortunately, last meeting when I was gonna talk about it, it was canceled. So I don't know if you guys have any of those documents that I sent out two weeks ago, that had CMP's offer on it.
We have CMP's offer in the package.
Okay.
It's there.
Can I see, just to see?
Yeah, is that, yes.
You'll get that back. Yeah, sure.
You didn't get that, in fact?
Yeah, I just couldn't find it tonight.
Okay. So, yes. So when I contacted CMP and said, you know, we are considering other options just in case we don't want to go with RealTerm, I was sent the terms and conditions. This is the 15-year lease that I've been talking about. On the backside of your paper, you'll see the model that they'll be using for the streetlights, the Autobond series. And when I asked what, I can actually give this back to you.
Thanks.
I asked what temperature the lights would be, the illumination, and it would be 3,000 Kelvin.
I thought it was 4,000 K.
Nope, they, I was told it would be 3,000. Perhaps I have that. But I was told 3,000. I can confirm that tomorrow.
Is that good?
3,000 is normal, it's average. 4,000, it's a lot more orange and noticeable.
Oh, yeah.
The cooler it is, the more white it is. And it tends to be more favorable to be at least cooler when you're in the downtown area, because that's where all the business is. So when you're having an active nightlife and people are there more of the time, you want them to have lights that aren't bothering them. Whereas in more secluded areas, you could be a bit more warmer, just because not that many people are gonna go there, and it's a tad...
So at the dangerous intersections, that's where we'd want the warmer lights?
You can. I think it's also cheaper to be cooler as well.
Okay.
Cheaper to be cool?
Yeah, I know, the moment I said that, that was gonna be...
Max, have they actually given you 3,000 K in writing? Because this refers to 4 and 5,000 K. And it's listed as an option. So they don't, they don't indicate, on this at least, what their standard is.
That, I believe, it should be in an email. I didn't print it out in time. Strangely enough, when I came here, I had it all set in, in my pile. And my...
It's not there.
And it's not there. That's, that's why I've been in and out for the last two or three times throughout this meeting, because I was trying to find the documents, but couldn't find it. So I recall it being, I recall them in an email saying 3,000, but I will confirm that, because especially if it goes to 5,000, that's, that's a bit troubling.
Yeah.
That's really bright.
Yes. But since the, since that meeting, I'll, there was also an update from RealTerm.
Sorry, can I just ask another question about CMP? It was my understanding, when they agreed to offer the town this option, that all of the streetlights would be identical.
Yes.
They don't allow you to tailor illumination to particular areas.
Correct.
One fits, one size fits all.
Correct.
Okay. And it's also my understanding that what they offer does not give us the option of smart controls.
Correct.
Okay, I think those need to be made very clear, because it's not as, at least in terms of options, it's not nearly as attractive as what RealTerm has put on the table.
I was actually gonna get into that, because the recent thing that happened with RealTerm was that they informed me that they have chosen the manufacturer and supplier, if we were to go with them, for the streetlights. Now, this doesn't mean we're gonna get our final report tomorrow. They still need to choose who the installers will be. They'll, they'll send out RFPs to local groups, such as Hetstrom over in Camden. They'll probably go up as far north for OnTarget, I believe. They're gonna try and find a more local individual. But, let me open it up. For the manufacturer and supplier, they sent out 13 RFQs and received 12 resp, and 12 responses qualified. I don't know how in-depth you want me to go into this whole thing. I can also, this is just available if someone wants to come see it in my office. I'll just have a copy, someone takes, or a PDF if someone wants me to send it to them. The minimum requirements they have is that the fixtures are assembled in North America. There is surge protection guarantees for all these lights, dimmable drivers, and equipped with seven-pin photo control receptacles. That's in case we want smart controls, and I'll get to that in a minute. And that they have a 10-year warranty. So if something happens in the fifth year, we're able to get a guaranteed replacement. And for the scoring, to determine which installer supplier, or non-supplier, manufacturer supplier they chose, they determined on the price to, price to purchase the fixtures, so how much it all costs, each fixture per unit, a 10-year operating cost, how much it's expected that these will operate over a 10-year period. The photometric analysis, so how they're expected to work in different geographical settings, and lumens per watt, per dollar, so how much illumination we're going to get for each dollar we're spending on this. And this, this evaluation was based on all the mid-coast towns. So this was Camden, Rockland, Rockport, Thomaston, Union, and Waldeboro. And the company they chose was, and I'm gonna mess up the name. Aquiti?
Aquiti?
Aquiti. Thank you.
I think it's Acuity.
Acuity?
Yeah.
And the supplier is American Electrical Lights. For a comparison, for the total fixtures, for the fixture price, Waldeboro, for Acuity, the price was $11,000. I'm just rounding it closest, because I'm not gonna get to like $2 and all that. The second place group was Specilins, Leotec, and Lumicon, with $12,000. So that's a $1,000 difference. It gets rather close once you get into the third and fourth. And in terms of a weighted score, RealTerm focused more on the price, like the better price you got, the better your score was. So for example, the fact that Acuity had a $1,000, was $1,000 cheaper for the fixtures, was very positive, and that was 30 points of the 100-point total. And the total price for the entire area, keep in mind, this is Waldeboro and the four other communities, for Acuity to do it all would be $158,000 and a half dol, $158,600. And the closest to that was Specilins-Leotec, In terms of scoring, Acuity was, across the board, more favorable for different operating costs. The only thing they didn't get a perfect score on was the photometric design. But that is .4 out of 20, possible 20 points they could have gotten, which, when I asked Francisco, who's the new project manager in the area, he said that is, that's a very minimal, unnoticed difference. And even though they didn't come in first for that, they are still gonna make sure that the light design does still meet Waldeboro's area, if we choose that. So then, that's what I have, the product evaluation. If we're not, I'm gonna get more information on that, because I did, I feel you're gonna ask about the very nitty-gritty specifics about it, and I'm gonna get that information from them. Unfortunately, I didn't get it by tonight. But if we're happy with what we get by the end of September, if we don't say anything, they're going to go ahead and do the IGA based on this information, with Acuity being our manufacturer and supplier. And if, yeah, go ahead.
So have we figured out what we gain by going with this group?
Going with Acuity?
With, no, with going, with the group of towns that have banded together, if you will, with RealTerm, to put a project together and to go out and quote and use the leverage of more numbers to bring the price down. Have we figured out what, how we've benefited from taking that approach?
Oh, instead of doing it by ourselves.
As opposed to just going one-on-one and doing it all by ourselves?
I'm not sure about that. I, the problem is that there's been some, some other towns have gotten similar discrepancies. When I came back, when I came here a month ago, I believe, I mentioned how there were some lights that were seen in Nobleboro and Jefferson.
That's right.
Camden and Rockport did have a similar thing, where they noticed lights weren't on the right streets, and I think Rockport did have one outside of their town. Julie, I believe, was talking with someone who was doing the Thomaston lights, and there was, I don't know if they were, no, I thought? Okay.
That's not my question. My question is, when we first started this process with RealTerm, they gave us a quote, an estimate, if you will. We weren't teaming up with the other towns at that point. We were alone. Since that time, they've developed a program for all of these different towns. Union, Warren...
Are we seeing any savings?
Are we seeing any savings from that?
I do not know that until the IGA comes out, because they gave us that $59,000 price tag when you, when the RFP first went out.
Right.
Back in September 2018.
So we just have to wait a little longer for that answer?
When the IGA comes out,
We'll know.
Even the numbers that they gave on this product evaluation, they even stated that, that while the numbers are accurate, prices might change when the IGA is released, when that time comes.
Okay. But there's, there should be an indication, because they do, they do specify in that report the number of lights each town would be contracting for. You could take the total number in that package, divide it into that gross amount, and then multiply by the number of lights that Waldeboro has, to come out with a back-of-the-envelope estimate of how much we would be saving, because we've gone along with this group the way we have. That's, that's my only comment.
That's one of the things I will ask them about.
Okay.
That's why I did want to come to the select board, since this, I felt was a very big moment for the streetlights. I felt you wanted to be aware of this, and if you had questions or contentions like that.
Okay.
The second part I had was on smart controls. I spoke with Noah from Ubiquia about how it would work, the features, and if, to see if that's something we still want to venture in, because I believe that would be an additional $13,000, if we're interested. It's an interesting feature. One of the things I think was notable was, well, two things I think was notable. The first was that we can just control the lights from, right here, from a secure webpage. And the second noticeable one was that we can sort of set different times for the lights to dim down and dim back up. So if, say we have, you know, same temperature and everything, but we want it to dim the brightness in downtown at, by...
To see fireworks.
To see fireworks. Well, you joke, actually, but that could be, that actually could be used.
It's very distracting when there's streetlights on and you're trying to watch fireworks in Damar Scott, I'm just saying.
Mm-hmm. So if we wanted to dim the lights down just for the fireworks event,
Right.
Or we wanted to just say from midnight to 4:00 AM, because no one's gonna be up at that time, we just dim them down to the lowest point we can. Not totally darkness, but low enough so that we're saving energy on that. And then it just turns back on at 5:00 AM. That is an option.
Well, we're not saving energy, because they're still gonna bill us on the wattage. They're not gonna bill us on the, bill us on the usage they never have. But it will certainly improve the aesthetics of the town by being able to do that.
And that's just what I think the value need to determine, because if you don't see a value in that, I almost would recommend not going with the smart controls. Because I did ask Noah, if we choose not to go with them, is there the possibility that in five years from now, when we paid off the lights, can we go, come back to this and possibly install it? Obviously, it would cost a bit more to have someone go up and reinstall those nodes. But he said it is possible, and he understands if we don't want to fully commit, you know, feet-first into the water on all this. So I would recommend not pursuing with smart controls, especially because unlike the LED streetlights with RealTerm, where I could call up Dave Johnson and Dover Foxcroft and say, what's it been like? I can't call any town and say, you've had the smart controls on for X amount of days. What do you think? Because all of the towns that they've mentioned using smart controls were either pilot projects or have now just installed like the full, actual set. I also wanted to just bring up that I don't know if there's any indication from the select board, whether we want to go with RealTerm or we want to focus on CMP instead.
So you need guidance on that?
I would like an indication if you're still on the fence or if you're still leaning one way or the other. The reason I ask is because the Island Institute does have a grant program for energy efficiency programs, and I, we are allowed to apply for two if we time it right. So I would use one grant to pay off a bit of the purchase from CMP, and then a second grant, if we got it, for the actual lights. But...
From RealTerm or from CMP? Or doesn't it not matter?
One, yeah, one grant would go to buying the lights from CMP. The other one would be paying RealTerm.
Okay.
So I think we have to make a decision tonight, which way you'd want to go, whether CMP or RealTerm.
It doesn't have to be tonight, especially if I don't have all this information that Bob was asking for. But I'm just saying, this is something I want you to just keep in the back of your minds.
So we need to put you on the agenda for when?
I'm hoping to have the installer information, perhaps...
Do you need more than two weeks?
Yeah, I think second week of October.
First meeting in October?
First meeting in October.
That might be too soon.
Well, for right now, we'll just put a pencil in it.
I'm fine with either one.
Okay.
That'll be on the 22nd.
Sounds good.
Okay.
But I also...
Thank you, Max, you're wonderful.
Well, just another quick thing.
Oh, I know, you got...
I was driving around on Friday to try and find these discrepancy polls. And I think, obviously, one of the problems is that they had the wrong roads. You know, they, obviously Severson doesn't have eight, or three lights. But Cross Street ironically does have the same poll numbers that CMP says, and the same number of lights that CMP says is on that road. So I think it's a matter of me driving around and finding where these streetlights are. So I'll, I'll do more of that.
Don't go away.
Don't go away.
I know.
Any more, any questions from, for Max on LEDs?
Good job, Max.
He is doing a good job.
Yeah.
Confusing at times, but good job.
Okay, so we move on to 11.3, renew medical dispensary and cultivation moratorium for 180 days.
Motion to renew.
There's a...
Okay, I can live with that.
Any further discussion on this? Now, if we reach 180 days going down the road and we want to renew again,
Yep.
we can do it.
You can do it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Piece of cake.
Okay.
That was easy.
Max, you just hit the easy button. Max, you just hit the easy button.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Yep.
Eleven-four, website.
Does anybody have a preference from, we've talked about this several times, Revive versus Civics Plus?
I prefer Revive because I like their website better, but.
I think you did too.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I thought they's both pretty cool, but Revive.
They are both very cool.
Yeah.
I just need some guidance on, because we have to make a motion to choose one.
I think, I think they're both good. You operate it, right?
I operated Civic Plus. I, I found it very easy, but Revive is similar. Uh, Tanya would say Revive.
She would.
She would.
That's important to know.
Well, it's, if we like.
She liked the salesman better. No, 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 not in a bad way. She found that the salesman from Civics Plus was much more responsive, but she likes Revive.
That's important.
They're, well.
Well, it's gonna fall on her. She's gonna be in the hot seat.
It, it, she will probably be on it more than I will.
Yeah.
And.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds like it's Revive.
Can you just reiterate what the cost, what the expected cost is over the next three years you're gonna?
Fifteen grand, no matter how you look at it, and it, we're gonna take it out either three to five years. We, we budgeted for five, so, um, but it's, it's needed. It's definitely needed.
Have they indicated a timetable at all as to when the new website would be actually up and running?
From the time we tell them, it's about four months.
About that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's pretty good.
I'm not gonna migrate all the stuff over, just so everybody's aware. I'm not migrating, you know, minutes from thirty years ago or ten years ago. I think three years' worth of minutes, we have the minutes if somebody really wants to do the research to come in. Um, you know, I'm not gonna take a lot of, and, and a lot of our data is outdated. So, we're gonna try to make it as quick and easy and simple as possible. But some of what we've maintained is great for historical purposes. But when you actually go into, um, Joomla and look at what people are looking at, it's, it's just not. You might have one or two people going in and looking at certain things, but it, it's, they can come into the office for that. I, I'm sorry to say, but it, it just doesn't, because we are charged somewhat on how much we bring over too, and I just.
You need a motion on Revise?
Yes.
Okay. I would leave that.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Are we doing Philbrook tonight?
Mm-hmm. No, we're doing the other thing.
We're doing Assessors.
So, there's a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Keep going.
Is there a second? All in favor of adjourned? Okay, we're done for this elect.
We've, keep it running.
Warning, just warning.
There you go. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think this permit. Okay. The people who do them have a permit.
State of Maine.
State of Maine, they have a permit.
What'd you say you had? You want me to sign it?
I don't have a permit because the State of Maine gives those. That's what we said.
Yeah, I thought. Yeah, I could be wrong. I'm not sure. Yeah.
I think they signed all these already.
Person to speak, I wish we asked him to stay. Should be done.
Do you have any, with signing things, I'll just put this in the folder. This is the extension of the moratorium.
Oh, this is the moratorium extension. Can you put that in there, Clint? Clint, that's the moratorium extension you need to sign. You don't have to stay for that, Max.
Stay for what?
The signing of the moratorium. You can go home now and be free.
Am I excused or am I supposed to take minutes of what else happened?
If you could take minutes for this, that would be great.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
We're getting way back.
I'm dweeb.
Yep.
I was calling Clint a dweeb.
You called all kinds of stuff in there.
Calling anything but late for lunch, huh?
Right.
All right, oh, they called this meeting to order? Darrell.
It's about time for you to.
Citizens comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one. Approved Consent Calendar.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? All right. Official action. Set FY twenty-twenty factoring. You're on.
Thank you. Um, you should have in front of you what our options are. September first is the date we wanna set it, just to work on tax liens and whatnot. Um, they're half due November half due in May, so that doesn't change. When the budget was put together, the estimated revenue sharing at thir- three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven seventy-two. That was the estimate at the time. As the legislature closed out, the new estimate is actually, um, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Is it eighty-nine or seventy-nine?
It's eighty-nine, three seventy-four, eighty-seven. Not knowing if we're gonna get it all, I kept ten thousand out and recommend that we use the fifty-nine, six oh-two, eighty-seven, which is the projected. Um, it was not voted on at the budget, but revenue sharing is to reduce taxes only, and it can't be used for anything else. What we have done lately is any excess revenue sharing has gone into the fund balance. And then you take money out of the fund balance. Previously, it was kept in a separate account, so any leftover would be added to what the estimate is and you just keep it totally separate. But anyways. So, there can be discussion as to whether you use the three nineteen or the fifty-nine or an additional fifty-nine thousand. That will affect what the rate is. Using the projected revenue sharing, the rate can be anywhere from eighteen-ten up to, uh, eighteen-ninety. Last year, it was seventeen-seventy. Down to the bottom, the only difference is in amounts, what do you have in overlay? At eighteen-ten, you'd only have twenty-four thousand, five hundred. You went all the way up to the eighteen-ninety, you'd have four hundred and twenty-six thousand certain overlay, which is legal to do. But, um, if we were following suit to last year, there was sixty-seven thousand in overlay. You would, using the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand in revenue sharing would bring you in at eighteen-twenty, up fifty cents. And it would be a seventy-four thousand, seven fifteen overlay. I did print out what your effect would be to your personal taxes. Clint had quite a change because he's no longer there as a resident. He loses his twenty thousand in homestead. That's like three hundred and fifty dollars. And Bob had a change in that solar is not exempted for tw- this year. You have to apply and get the exemption last year. Last year, they exempted it under the, and they're saying, "Nope, it's not exempt." So, you gotta pay for that for one year. So, that's the difference in yours that shows. Other than that, gladly discuss any questions or what the board wants to do.
What's your recommendation?
I would recommend using the, uh, eighteen-twenty with the three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three seventy-four, eighty-seven out of the revenue sharing. The other way, if you don't use that additional revenue sharing, you're gonna have to go with eighteen-thirty. And you would have sixty-five thousand in overlay. So, you're gonna have to pull up ten dollars or more on average.
And that's your choi- that's a choice you guys have to make.
Or any other amount you want.
I would make, I would point something out, a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but I wanna make a point. We could've discussed this two weeks ago at our second August meeting, which we did not have. And I feel strongly that we should've held that meeting. I know I wasn't gonna be there, but there would've been four of you here to make that decision.
There only would've been three of you.
Then three. So be it. That's what select boards are for. That's why we have majorities. And, I mean, if I'd been run over by a truck, God forbid, you still would've had three.
Well, we would've had three, maybe two.
Well, then you can't vote. But if you'd had three, you'd had your quorum and you would've been able to do this. Anyway, that's just my, my personal feeling. I'm happy to take part in the discussion. I'm fortunate to be able to do so.
So, can you lay this out? I know I asked you this before. Lay this out this year as opposed to last year. What are the numbers?
On the very back of your packet, you have last year's. So, last year's.
Well, it says two nineteen.
No, on the very last page.
All the way to the back.
Way back.
Pick up your packet, go to the back. There's last year's numbers. And highlighted was the seventeen-seventy. That was the mill rate.
The difference that Darrell's talking about is that we anticipated a certain amount of revenue sharing. And we were conservative when we did the budget because legislature was still working on it. Now, um, there's guidance that they've increased the revenue sharing. So, do we now anticipate what revenue sharing is or what we actually anticipated? And if we do that, we're gonna have to, um, also make the motion to amend the budget to reflect the increased revenue sharing.
So, this, so this number nineteen on twenty-eighteen, you go over here to nineteen in twenty-nineteen. And that would be one eighty-one? As opposed to last year, it was one seventy-seven? Am I looking at that right?
You, mill rate? Is that what you're saying?
The mill rate in twenty, explain.
Eighteen was seventeen-seventy.
Seventeen-seventy.
It's point zero one seven seven per thousand, seventeen dollars and seventy cents per thousand. So, your options this year is to use less revenue sharing and go to eighteen-thirty or use the additional revenue sharing the state has given the town and go to eighteen-twenty per thousand.
But in fact, the state hasn't given us a darn thing yet. We don't know what it's.
The legislature voted that they would put that back to the towns in revenue sharing. And we generally get what they, a lot. I mean, it's just like school funding and everything. You don't get it.
Right, and Darrell didn't fully anticipate what their town was.
Usually, you would keep ten thousand out. And usually, you wouldn't take what's left over and put it into the fund balance. You leave it in a separate account, and then you got any extra, if we get four hundred thousand instead of the three eighty, you've got another twenty.
And wasn't there special legislation just recently adopted to allow you to do this, correct?
I don't know what.
There was. There was, because I know we looked it up. It does allow you to, because, because the state legislature realized that it was up in the air when most budgets were done. So, they're allowing you to.
It's very similar to the school had the extra money and they did not give it back. They spent it.
That's right.
I know, that's a very similar one. We did, PEG did notify the auditor and asked what they would prefer we do. And they said, "Use the new number." Because if you use the old number, it's gonna mess you up.
The new number being?
The higher.
The higher one.
Right. I can read you that email.
So, what are you recommending, eighteen-thirty?
No, eighteen-twenty.
Yeah, okay. That's what I got wrote down.
And that would give you the seventy-four thousand. If you didn't feel you needed seventy-four thousand in overlay, you'd go with the twenty-four, which is on the. Fifty thousand less.
How's this gonna affect, affect the, the average taxpayer in Waldeboro? How much more are they gonna expect to pay?
So, fifty cents times a hundred and fifty, seventy-five dollars, is that what it's?
Seventy-five dollars a year.
It's a hundred and fifty.
Well, that's a lot for people on fixed income.
Next year, they're gonna give them an extra, if they're a resident, five thousand more on homestead. So, that'll be next year. The sales are coming in like at eighty-five percent ratio, so we're about.
Very fast, I'm telling you, Chase.
We're about, on average.